Easy to itch.
Ready? Welcome everyone to our April 23 city council meeting. If we could have Ro calling to establish the quorum, please ma'am.
Mickey Snyder.
Here.
Terry McLung.
Here.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
And Kristi is absent with note.
Okay. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Get a motion to approve the agenda. Second. Any additions, changes? Yes ma'am.
Couple of them. I'd like to hear a report from you, the mayor, in regards to your talk to the community center. And I would like to add on there if anybody has heard anything about that special meeting last week about the trash tax. And the last one and the most important.
Well, let's do one at a time here. Let's get.
That's two.
Your first one, you want to report on the community center?
Yeah, your talk with the community center.
Regarding, I mean, what about the community center? I mean.
All that stuff that we can't have any contact until they show us papers. You were going to talk to them in person.
Okay.
Who's the second?
Get a second.
Say.
All right. What was your second item?
Okay, second item, does anybody know anything about what happened at the last special meeting on the trash tax? I don't know if you heard anything?
Not hearing a second? Okay.
Okay, then the last one was what day are we going to change our Memorial Day meeting to from May 28th to when? Since we can't meet on Memorial Day. Anybody gonna take a second then?
Okay.
Just take a second.
All right. Melissa?
Yes. Can we take number two off since Ms. Kendrick isn't here? And then number three.
Number two under.
I'm finished, I'm sorry. And then number three, I don't have anything from planning. So are we.
Oh, that needs to be postponed, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Are you postponing number two or are you deleting it?
You're deferring it, aren't you?
Deferring it, yeah.
Okay. One second, someone else?
Do we have a second on deferring those?
Oh, yes, a second.
Okay. Anybody else?
But are you doing the first quarter financial report or was that Lonnie?
That was Lonnie, but.
Can we move?
Excuse me?
No, that's, no, that's, that's city clerk. That's our, that's our quarter, yeah.
That's the one, okay, because I thought if it was.
No, that's, she just didn't put her name down on that.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor of the agenda as amended, sing five a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, get approval for the minutes for April 9th. Get a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor, sing five a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right. Got a planning vacancy that expires that we need to get filled. If anybody wants to submit an application. And Tom, are you want to, you just here for observing? Okay. And then we also have under parks, an application by Ruth Hager, which she'd been on parks for quite a few years. And she's resubmitting her application.
I made a motion to re-mute her.
Second.
Second.
Any correction or any comments?
That we make it active immediately.
It expires five once.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. All those in favor, sing five a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And cemetery commission, we got several places on that. So any citizens out there interested in volunteering on cemetery, please come down and fill out an application. All right, that brings us to public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Eric Knowles and I live at 2 Spur Lane in this city. I'm here tonight to ask you to table your consideration of the early bond payoff. Ordinance number 2265, until certain financial discrepancies are resolved, until you complete a detailed analysis of what you'll be giving up by passing the ordinance, and until you give yourselves and the concerned public time to review and question whether accelerated bond payments is the best use of the INI money, and until you get more informed and expert input on these issues. First, the numbers don't add up. Your accelerated amortization schedule states that the unpaid principal balance of both bonds is over $3 million. Last year's independent audit of the water and sewer department stated in note seven that as of the first of this year, the remaining bond principal for both bonds would be less than half the amount stated in the amortization schedule. Do not pass this ordinance until you reconcile the audit numbers with the accelerated amortization schedule. Second, what are we giving up by using the money this way? The city is proposing to spend more than three quarters of a million dollars of INI money over the next five years to save approximately $72,000 in interest. Could the city get a better return doing something else? A more reasonable use of this INI money would be to apply it to actually improving the water infrastructure. The loss, 53% of the water we purchased last year was lost and not billed to customers. This loss cost the city over a quarter of a million dollars. Over five years, this loss would add up to more than one and a quarter million dollars. The city doesn't have to fix many leaks to save more money than the early interest payoff would gain. So answer this question for us. Is it better to save $72,000 of bond interest or to begin to stem the one and a quarter million dollars in lost water? Third, what's the emergency? Why did you rush this ordinance through two readings and limit the time the council and the citizens have to examine this proposal? What do you know that you didn't tell the citizens? And lastly, your dealings with the water rates and with this bond payoff ordinance convinced me that Eureka Springs needs a water sewer commission. Alderman Kendrick proposed that the city establish a water sewer commission. I wholeheartedly support her proposal. I do not support this bond ordinance. Thank you.
Suzanne Reed.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Reed. I live at 17 Flint Street. I'm here to say that I 100% support the downhill trail project. I have worked in many countries around the world dealing with community development. And I've watched communities face this kind of decision making throughout my career. And I'm happy to say many have taken advantage of these opportunities. But I have seen communities who don't take advantage of the opportunities that we have right here in Eureka Springs to the detriment of their communities. I would like to say that we have a very unique opportunity here to use our natural environment that we have in a way that's supportive of this community. I believe that our parks commission is doing an excellent job at figuring out how to do it in a way that's sensitive to our environment. And I believe that the types of tourists that this will bring in will be an excellent addition to our community. I think they'll be respectful of what we have here. And I think our local people who are brave enough to go down the hills will also benefit from it greatly. So I 100% support this. Thank you.
Edvich.
Edvich Dennison, 3185 East Van Buren, Keel's Creek Winery. We have a son who is a cyclist. We just had a very long conversation with him. He lives out on the west coast. His commentary is if we weren't here, he would never come to visit here. But being a cyclist, if you were to see that on a map, he would come here to visit. Demographics of his group is typically very, very healthy individuals. They're into environmental. He's worked on actually getting trails built out on the west coast. And so there's a lot of good consideration there for the city to consider that this will increase our visitors to our community. As a business owner, I would like that. That's the kind of demographics we would prefer having in this community. So healthy people wanting to enjoy our environment. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Bill Henson.
My name is Bill Henson. I don't live in town, in, in the city limits. I live at 1242 County Road 102. My background is, I'm basically, I'm an engineer. And so I've done a lot of engineering work. But over the years, I'm, I'm pretty much known as a, and been associated with environmental organizations. And all my life, leaned towards the environmental concerns. But in this case, you know, it just looks like it makes sense to think very seriously about the downhill trail. From an economic standpoint. And it, it, it overcomes the lesser amount of environmental concerns it to have with the disturbing the, the environment in that area. The, um, trails will bring a great deal of people to town. It will bring money into the economy here. To me, it, it really, of course, you know, I'm, I can only get information from what I can find in the papers and in the various publications around and talking to different people. So there may be other factors that come up. But right now, in my, in my opinion, it's a, it's a gift basket. And we should go ahead and support that, I believe. Think the parks commission doing a good job. So, um, I guess that, that's all I'll say. I mean, I'm for it. Does anybody have any questions?
We're not allowed, Bill.
Oh, you're not allowed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to change the course a little bit here, but it's kind of related. I've been absent from the city council meetings for about two months now. But in that time, I've watched, I've read, I've laughed, I've cried a lot. And the one common thread that I keep finding through all of our current controversies is there is a fundamental lack of trust between the citizens, departments, commissions, and organizations. And you can see that when you watch all the meetings and you, and you, and you read the newspaper articles, nobody trusts anybody. And I've been thinking a lot, how can we change that? How can we kind of soften that? Communication is key. And I think not only here through city hall, but as individuals, organizations, commissions, we can communicate a lot better and help rebuild some of that trust that has been broken over the years. Some things we can't fix, you know? We can't control how organizations outside of the city stack their boards and manage their boards and run for political office so they can stack their board again, so they get their way, and then jump on a commission to get their way again. We can't fix that. So how do we, as not only the people who live here, but as our leaders, what can we do to help rebuild the trust that seems to be so inherently just lost between the people who are paying the taxes and doing a lot of the work, and then outside organizations, commissions, and city leadership? And it's a tough, it's a tough thing to manage because I think it's not all coming from local, but it's also on a national level. And everybody gets so darn irritated on a national level that then they start looking deep on a local level to what's going on. And then they start picking old wounds. But I don't know, I, I have no suggestions on how we can try to rebuild that trust. But I've just noticed that that's something that seems to be lacking. And maybe just through better communication, instead of talking to the hand or talking to the ass, we can talk to the face and we can start listening to each other, weighing both sides and try to rebuild some of that trust that's just really lost. You can see it every week in the newspaper and in every meeting, there's just a lack of trust. So if anybody has any ideas, I think it would be great as talking points and things that we can do to create better communication and try to make everybody a little bit happier and easier to deal with. Perfect time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Once again before you, my name is Judy Montgomery. I live in Ward 1 in the city of Eureka Springs. And I am simply here to once again give my endorsement for trails, parks, and particularly the downhill. I believe that as others have more eloquently stated here tonight, yes, it is a gift basket and it will be a help in our economic development. The people who ride high-performance bicycles spend money on their hobbies. And part of that money could be spent with them coming here. And also, I would like to say that I believe that as has been stated, that there is minimal impact. I believe the parks director and his staff have been watching out for that, though they have not been credit, given credit for that. And I believe that the benefits far, far outweigh any potential harm. Thank you.
My name's Jay Bender. I live at 268 Lakeside Road. That's out in Grassy Knob, so it's not in town. But we've been here since about 2009. Moved here from Washington State. And the little town that we lived in there has bike trails. And in the winter time, there are cross-country ski trails that go through town. And I know that people move there to use the trails. That part of the reason that they move there is because those trails exist. And by and large, those people that move there are environmentalists. They care about the environment and, and they don't want to spoil nature or create a Disneyland. Now, a neighbor mine there told me that she thought you had to live there for about seven years before you could be considered local and have a say in things. And I understood the same to be true here. And Susan Morrison told me there was an additional stipulation, you had to at least march in at least one parade before you could be considered local. So I've, we've, we've passed that test several times over. One of the parades I marched in was alongside a nice woman named Pat Costner when we were all opposed to the SWEPCO power line thing, I'm sure you all remember. And so when I've read in the paper about some people's opposition to trails, and it sounded like the opposition was more opposition to trails in town, I thought I should come in and, and speak. And I spent the afternoon reading about trails and impacts in neighborhoods. And it sounded like there was concern that there was going to be crime or degradation in property values as a result of trails going through town. And what I've read this afternoon, the exact opposite is true. Property values tend to increase and crime does not increase. I think the people who are going to be come to town to use the downhill trails and the trail system out at Lake Leatherwood are probably not going to be using the trails in town. I see those in-town trails being local people. I don't know if you folks know Will and Kendra who own the zip line business. They're avid bicyclists. Adam Beasat. There are a whole host of people that ride bikes here in town, Denton West and, and his son Cory. Those are going to be the people that are using the in-town trails to get to Lake Leatherwood. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Should we chip in and get her nag timer?
Hello, I'm Bruce Wright. I live at 13 Cloud Drive in town. I've lived here since 1979 and seen some changes. I was on one of the first committees, I think, or one of them, early, I think in the 90s, something like that, for Lake Leatherwood before all the ballfields were built and stuff. We didn't have a master plan, but we were asked to go out, kind of walk the grounds and what have you, and see what potential would be there and to keep it natural as possible. And we were able to walk some, some trails and walk some of the creeks and we're able to see the natural beauty of it all and see what potential is there. But I'm a strong supporter for the trails in town and out at Lake Leatherwood. I had an opportunity, my background's historic preservation, and I was able to work at numerous national parks, was able to see some of the trails and built some of the trails there in the park system. But I'm all in favor of it here. I think Justin's done a phenomenal, fantastic job. But I will back this up 100% in support of it.
I have one letter that we received from Bobby Keller. I'd like to read it to the record. Says, "Are you aware that volunteers, some who do not even live in Eureka Springs, are in fact accessing our historic neighborhood? And the green spaces that border many of our backyards for several new off-road mountain bike trails that will eventually connect with the bike trails to Lake Leatherwood, bringing possibly hundreds of tourists on bikes into our peaceful, quiet, historic district neighborhood on any given weekday. As citizens of Eureka Springs, shouldn't we be having input into this process? Simply at least be told about this project for off-road mountain bikes and mountain trials in our town? Are you willing to sacrifice your peaceful, quiet, historic district neighborhood? Are you willing to sacrifice your safety by having total strangers within easy access, anytime, day or night, to your backyards or the back of your homes? Have you read or heard about the increased number of drug dealers, homeless people, and homes burgies in Eureka Springs? Are you willing to sacrifice your privacy for the neighborhood's home safety privacy? Will not be compromised by those, by these new trails, but who think they know what's best for those of us who do live in Eureka Springs Historic District and will be compromised? I am a 68-year-old woman who has owned her home here in Eureka Springs Historic District for 30 years. And I for one do not think our charming historic district neighborhood should be turned into some kind of ecotourism amusement park."
All right, well, that brings us to, let's see, our next order business, which is ordinance number 2265 for the third reading.
Second.
Yes, sir, Mr. McCollum.
I kind of went through the stuff that Eric had given us. And, and the one thing that, and what he even said in his, his speaking there at the microphone, and the, the thing about the, the gallonage, I, you know, I'm, uh, the loss of 155 million gallons and I'm, and I'm pretty sure that it's, it is at, at still around 50% the loss. And, and I kind of like that idea of, of not applying it all on the, on the front, on the note, you know, as the interest versus repairs. I think it is a good idea to, to work things as we go. I'd like to see things fixed too. So I would like to recommend that we postpone this vote for at least.
You want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we postpone this vote until at least the next meeting, until we have a little time to consider.
Okay. Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr., go ahead, Mickey.
Didn't, when we were originally working on this, didn't we come up with figures? I wish Lonnie was still here. Didn't we have figures in regards to repair work that could be done because the INI was not going to affect it one way or another? That we already had a schedule for the repairs and this would actually ease up the money?
It's going to be part of the repairs, correct.
Okay, well, that's what I thought.
All we're doing is taking the money, extra money too, and applying it to the second bond issue also.
Right, so we're actually covering both things?
Yes.
The bonds and the repairs.
Mr. Mitchell.
That's a great point, Mickey. It wasn't like we were not going to be doing.
It wasn't like we were not going to be doing the repairs while we were doing this. If we consider postponing it to the next time, I would, the only thing I could see by doing that would be that Lonnie takes this assessment that was given to us and analyzes it and compares it to what we were looking at in the ordinance and gives us feedback. But to just wait two weeks makes no sense to me. So if Lonnie's really going to take what Eric Knowles gave us, analyze it, and tell us if it's factual or misinformation, so we can compare it to the ordinance, I wouldn't have a problem with waiting. But if that doesn't happen, I'm not in favor of postponing it.
Well, we can always change the ordinance, too.
I'll be glad to. I mean, I'm going to have Lonnie, if we do defer this, I'd definitely have Lonnie go ahead and research this and analyze it. Mr. McClellan?
I think Mickey hasn't spoken yet.
I'm just saying, we've taken so long getting to this point. If we go ahead and pass it, Lonnie can still do his thing, and we can still make a change if we need to.
I would prefer we defer it before, yeah. I think that's the best thing to do. Mr. McClellan?
I think, I think, another fact that we can bring up, that if we are applying only a percentage to the bonds and a percentage that we're retaining for infrastructure repairs, then I think we could give that figure to the public, too, is what we, you know, kind of figure what that breakdown is, so they'll be aware of that, too. So the two weeks wouldn't hurt.
Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of deferring this for two weeks, want to do a roll call?
Why?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McLenn?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah.
Five zero?
All right, it's not done. I will have Lonnie look at it, and we'll get back next week. All right, our next item is under New Business, is item number one, Municipal League City Attorney's opinion on parks' right to enter contracts.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I have not heard back from anything from the Municipal League. I've pinged them several times, and I know they're busy with a lot of different items, and they're shorthanded at this point. And I've also, no, I talked to the city attorney, and he's looking into parts of it also, and the questions that, and I think there was a little bit more questions than just entering into the contract with the greenhouse that we were wanting to do. So there is an item in our city ordinance that our city clerk pointed out that the parks do have the right to enter into those contracts without the city council approval. But, Mr. Mitchell?
They do, but the motion that I made at several meetings ago about stopping engagement, very clearly the attorney said cover parks, because parks is a portion of the city. So I think that motion about suspending engagement until they provided certain data also covers that contract, and I'm just going to point that out.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. We'll go into our resolutions for acknowledging the trails.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Y'all have the four-year resolution in support of the trails at Lake Leatherwood. Mr. Mitchell?
I make a motion that we assign this resolution number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir, you want?
This will just be my personal opinion here, and not speaking for everybody else. But I think I really want the public to understand, there has not been, and I think we're confusing a couple of issues here. I believe that myself included, and I believe even council, has always been in support of parks and the trail system, and definitely has been in support of the Walton family and what all they do for this city and are doing with this park situation. I think what we're blending here, however, is the issue of parks and the either collusion or the arrangements that have seemed to be taking place or wanted to take place with Eureka Springs Community Center. There is a distinct difference. And so please do not, for my part at least, be confusing the fact that I'm very, very supportive of parks, the work they're doing, the commission and everything with all the trails outside the city limits. I think the issue of trails in the city limits needs a little more exploration with the public here, very obviously. And I know that will happen. But please don't take the issue over here of the parks and/or any city entity and engaging with Eureka Springs Community Center and blend it into trails, because that was never my intent ever.
Anybody else? All right, I guess we'll have a roll call vote on support of the resolution, resolution in support of the natural surface trails at Lake Leatherwood.
Mr. McLenn?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five zero. Resolution number 726, resolution in support of natural surface trails at Lake Leatherwood City Park within Eureka Springs Arkansas. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, having been informed that the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission applied for and obtained a Walton Family Foundation grant from Stuart Walton and Tom Walton to fund natural surface trails at Lake Leatherwood City Park. And whereas the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission approved plans to allow construction of natural surface trails. And whereas the trails will provide additional recreational facilities and tourism opportunities for the city of Eureka Springs and 31 miles of trails. And whereas the trails currently constructed and planned will potentially contribute over $700,000 annually to the economy of Eureka Springs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Eureka Springs Arkansas that. The city council wishes to express support for the construction of the bike trails at Lake Leatherwood City Park, and thanks Stuart Walton and Tom Walton for their help with this project.
All right. That brings us to the next item, which is a discussion of parking within city. Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Green.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right.
This has four short components, two comments, and Mrs. Green has a section, and I have something that I need to pass out, a follow-up from a couple of years ago. Back when planning started looking at the parking on Spring Street based on a complaint from a citizen who had difficulty parking up there because they used the street, and finally recently striping took place. At that time, planning, in their discussions at their meeting, also discussed taking the striping or designating parking spaces up around the end of Spring Street and was looking at moving up towards Harmon Park to increase the number of parks. They had some discussion there, and I, from watching that, I felt that that was still an active review at that time. They hadn't gotten rid of it. Likewise, at that meeting, they brought up potentially looking at Benton Street, accessing from up on King's Highway down into the city, the sidewalk where the sidewalk was, and giving consideration was that even a potential to look at as far as parking down in, leaving Egress out of the city going up. Because right now, even if you try to go up Benton Street, when you get there, when you start getting by those multifamily places and all, people are parking on the right side of the road, and it's almost down to one lane anyway, it's so difficult. But they had discussed, again, the potential of Benton Street possibility, and it definitely hadn't been explored anymore, but looking at moving on the sidewalk side down in and striping that for parking, and again, going around Spring Street up to, towards Harmon Park, adding potential spaces. And I don't know where that's at. I don't know if planning wants to continue looking at that and bring it back to us, but it seems like it should be looked at and explored a little more. Want me to finish? You want, I better stop.
Well, I got a question on that one.
On Benton Street?
Yeah, were you talking about, if I missed, about making it one way? Is that what you're saying?
Basically, yes.
Yeah, okay.
One way, Egress out.
Yeah, going up, yeah.
Going up, and then, not there, okay. The second one. And then, the last one, is I'm going to pass around something here that came up about a year ago. I brought the new issue up on Washington Street, where Little Point Street comes out onto Washington Street there. And it had to do with, there was some new construction going on down on Point Street to build a house, and then potentially a second home. And the question came up about the ability for fire suppression equipment to access Point Street, because in 2008, there was a major structure fire on Point Street, and the fire suppression equipment had great difficulty getting down there. As a matter of fact, they had to finally go back and find a much smaller truck. They had to bring chainsaws to cut the trees, et cetera, et cetera. So I brought that issue to council, but at the time, no decision was made, and it just kind of evaporated and went off. Right after that, the building inspector for the city of Eureka Springs and the fire marshal, Mr. Kelly, picked up on that issue and went out on Point Street and Washington Street and did a complete assessment of what was going on at that time. Because the person, the building inspector, had gone ahead and given a certificate to do the, build the house at the end of Point Street. Based on that, they, both the building inspector and the fire marshal came up with some suggestions. And I have a letter here dated March 20th, 2018, from Jim Kelly, the fire marshal, to Dwayne Allen. And it says, "To all interested parties, it was not a suggestion to red curb the area directly across from Point Street, plus approximately 40 feet each direction." I'll check my notes for exact measurement. But it was a requirement before I signed off on the project. I noticed that part has not happened yet also, but I also have not signed off on a certificate of occupancy for that house that was built. Do they have one? I think you're correct in asking why it has not happened and why it should not happen now. Likewise, I have some more documentation from Kelly at that point. So what I provided you, what I found out had happened in discussion over this last year or more with Dwayne Allen, was he said that he had actually gone out and bought a gallon of the red paint to paint the curb to allow the fire trucks to come from either direction on Washington Street and turn into Point Street. But he didn't do that because it turned out that we were supposed to make a change in the ordinance on the municipal code, and it's attached in there on page 218, to allow that. And because we never made a change in the number of feet extending, then he cannot continue with that. So I have talked to Fire Marshal Kelly. The building inspector has been consulted. He remembers going out. They brought fire trucks out from the fire station and attempted to turn on the Point Street, and with the parking across from it, they absolutely cannot access it. Now, public works did come out and grayed Point Street. They cut two trees down, they cut some of the branches back, and they opened it up. So if you can get on to Point Street with the fire truck, you can go down Point Street. With one new building down there, and then a potential other one being built, there's like five houses on Point Street, which set on, I'll call it a royale or a canyon, that just totally accesses straight into the city. And should they have another structure fire like it today, which they barely could take and got under control in time, it could be a serious problem. So I have attached a slight change to the ordinance to bring this into compliance with the fire marshal, who also attached some actual fire code specific to obstruction of fire apparatus and access roads, which says that fire apparatus access roads shall not be obstructed in any manner, including the parking of vehicles. For this section, we've already addressed with council and requested the intersection of Point and Washington Street be marked red curb for 60 feet to the south and north from the center of Point Street on the west side of Washington to allow room. So I'd like to make a motion that we change on page 218, the municipal code, and also on ordinance number 1845, from 101902 to CC, that says, "No parking should be allowed on the west side of Washington Street, extending 154 feet from the corner of Summit Street to in front of 12 Washington."
I'll second that.
Mr. McClellan?
I mean, I understand, I understand the purpose of it, and it would be great. But, you know, one, it sets a precedent for every other neighborhood that parking is like that. White Street, Prospect, you've got, I mean, that street would be no different than Fairmount with people parking there, or what else would be there? There'd be Kansas, is another one there. I have to look at Elk Street, and, but I think that might be another one, you know. I understand it's great to get the equipment down there, but, I mean, it's historically been that way since the town was built. And I was on the fire department for 20 years, and many times, we fought fires in hand-laid lines. It's just part of the job when you can't get vehicles in. If they're not, if they're not planning right for the smaller vehicles to get down in there, then they're not paying attention to the job. But that's, you know, I appreciate what Jimmy's wanting to do, but if we're going to set a precedent with that, then you're going to have to, I think, potentially block out a whole lot more parking. I don't think you can just pick on one area.
Mickey?
I was on council before when we dealt with this, and they were going to do something with the curbs, you know, cut those back a little bit. They were going to take out the trees. There was a new house going in, which is why they needed accessibility. Everything got approved to be done because of the situation. And we did discuss all the different places around town that have this problem, and knew that at some point, on various places, we would have to deal. So I don't understand what happened that it never got finished philosophy. But, yes, but, so this should have been done. It was approved. It was a very lengthy discussion and dealing with it. It wasn't like, you know, a five-minute come into council, talk and vote. It took quite a while, and there was a lot of checking. And the fire chief at the time had gone all around town and had a list of places that could possibly cause some problems. So if this thing was passed, it was approved, it needs to be finished.
Mr. Mitchell?
What happened based on Dwayne was we didn't change the ordinance, therefore he didn't...
So we approved it, but didn't change the number?
Didn't, I don't think it got approved that night. I don't remember it getting approved. I think it just kind of turned to vapor and disappeared in the stratosphere. But the people that were concerned about it, as far as the curb cut, Kelly wrote at the time that the curb could be cut back another foot or so on the south side without encroaching on private property. It would assist some making the turn, but that small amount will not allow for clear access without meeting. What I am concerned with is we have the fire marshal. He obviously is the fire marshal for a reason. We have the building inspector. They both went out there. The building inspector, the question comes up, should the building inspector be giving permits to build new houses on street that don't have the same access with fire suppression equipment as most of the city? I mean, that's the bottom line. Are we going to be building houses where you can't get the permission to grant fires? Are we gonna be building houses where you can't get the fire suppression equipment? Then the other question I have, if it comes before council, we're sitting here looking at it and we don't address the issue, then what liability do we have as a city should there be a fire or something happen there because we don't choose to take the recommendation from our fire marshal and basically our building inspector who went out there? That just does not make any sense to me.
Yes, sir.
I think we almost need to get the fire marshal and the fire chief in here because you've talked to the fire marshal, but I've talked to the fire chief. When we were discussing this before, the fire chief told me that they had the two small pump trucks that could go down that road. And then also, all the firemen are trained with this tow and carriage. They can hook up the hoses and run down the mountain with them. So, he was not saying that we had to do this. He was saying that they could cover as a load. I'm just saying, we need to get them both in here to talk at the same time.
Start over?
You wanna defer the motion? Defer the, make a motion to defer until we get them in here?
Is there an actual motion to change the city code tonight? No, I thought the motion to defer that.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion to defer until, and I'm thinking that the most part of the motion is to have the fire marshal and fire chief here?
Right.
I'd like to amend that motion to have the building inspector here too.
Yeah, all parties should be involved.
Let's get them all.
Let's just make the motion to defer this for two weeks until we get the fire marshal and.
Would you like me to make the motion?
To defer it?
For two weeks until the fire chief, the fire marshal and the building inspector are here.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that deferment?
Okay.
Hearing done. All those in favor, say, "No, roll call." Yep, thank you.
Did you want, she wants to say something?
No, no.
I'm the next part of the parking. Oh, let's get this motion done.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay. Did you have?
Yeah, mine was just kinda, I still, I wanted to know if, what had, from the last meeting on the Mill Hollow parking, what has anything, I know you're busy, but.
The Mill Hollow parking, the tree fell across the street, or didn't fall across the street, it fell and almost hit the camper.
Oh.
That's the reason the camper's over on the other side of the street where the parking is right now.
Okay.
Until the city cuts that tree, the city's, the tree is in the ditch. And so, when we get that cut, then they'll move the camper back over.
To where?
To where they've been parking it for, prior to.
In the parking lot?
Well, to their side of the street, on the other side of the street.
Oh, okay. They, they own the property and?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And what about the, the grease?
The dump and grease. That wouldn't work into an arrangement that previous mayors had with them to keep that lot clean.
Okay.
And so, they could park there or store their grease and stuff. There's still a trash container there, but my, and I haven't talked to the new, there's not a new owner, but there's a new manager.
Okay.
And he may not be using that container. It may be going by can, so that may be taken care of. The other camper was gone.
Okay, yes.
There was two at once, and that's not, no longer there.
Right.
So, we're just allowing him to park there.
Okay.
The other people are just parking from the restaurant.
Okay, but there is a, like U-Haul type trailer that's holding a bunch of supplies that he works out of from the.
Now, part of that's not the city property. Part of that goes to the Arch Colony.
Okay.
And that's, I think.
In the back, way in the back?
Way in the back? No, I don't know who that is.
Okay.
I'll find out who that is.
All right. Yeah, I just wondered if, like I said, I know you've been busy. Has Public Works been out there to assess it? I mean, I'd like to get, get it marked and up for city parking for when we've got such an overflow.
Well, until we get it, you can't mark something that's not great and do not pave.
Okay.
So, we'll never be able to mark it.
But signage that public parking this way?
We've talked to Public Works and CAPC has signage that we're gonna try and put up on Main Street.
Okay.
Public parking.
Okay, good.
Down there.
Thank you, Butch.
Yep.
Chip could add that to the Eureka Springs app too, where he has the parking designated.
Okay, yeah, okay.
True. All right.
And should we send the Benton Street to planning to?
I'll go ahead and talk to the planning and see where, where they are on that. And I'll talk to the chairperson and find out also about striping the rest of the streets.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one thing on the Benton parking.
Mm-hmm.
You might want to consider which directions a whole lot easier to park going downhill than uphill.
It won't, probably won't be on the street going up.
Well, didn't you say?
It just will be on the street next to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And be making one way going up.
But that's what I'm saying, so if you're gonna try to park there, if you have.
I doubt, we're not, I'm not anticipating parking on the hillside.
Okay, well, hey, when you've had a four or five speed going up just a little bit, it's hard parking.
Where I'm talking about, we'll take care of it. All right.
Just one of those things to think about.
Well, Mountain Street has parking.
Yeah, that I never.
And I'm having, and by the way.
That I never use anymore.
Mr. Mitchell, I'm having Mountain Street looked at and re-striped because there's some longer, I think there's about 24 to 26 feet in length in parking. So, I think we can get another couple of parking spaces on Mountain Street.
That's good, since the guy's here running around with his little machine.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Butch.
Anyway. All right, any further on parking? All right. Mr. Mitchell, plastic bags and alternatives.
You know, when I, I think.
Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right.
First year I was on the council, somehow I remember bringing this topic up and it was kind of like parking on Mountain Street just disappeared as vapor. But the other day, Pat Masukas was in here and she reminded me in her discussion at public comments about the plastic bags, which got me thinking again. The reason I had brought it years ago, and I believe she brought it up, is it does have the potential to go along with a lot of things that Eureka Springs does about the environment, the issues with plastic, even reading stuff on the internet, the, how big is, it's larger than the country of France, the plastic that's floating in the islands and the ocean out there. Seventy-five hundred some tons of plastic that looks like islands that are just floating. And then you look around town here and you look at all the plastic and everything that's going on. Yeah, we recycle a lot, but we really don't recycle plastic bags and various other things. And I spend quite a bit of time up in Pittkin County and Aspen and down through the Salt area for various reasons, but I'm there a lot. And they have a system there where if you come in the grocery store and you end up in a plastic bag, this grocery store automatically charges three or five cents, I think it's up to five cents now, for the plastic bag. And that money is remitted into the county and to the cities for doing that. You could request, they have the paper bags, or they also have the bags that you carry yourself. But picking up plastic bags and from any of the stores, retail and or grocery, has a cost associated with it. And I think it is something that we should, based on the way this city looks at the environment, the way we handle things, I think it is something that we should start considering to add along with the recycling and the various other things we do. That was my point.
Any further comments? Mickey?
Whatever happened to having, oh, God, I've been on council too long, where we had approved putting into Basin Park, a little stand for doggy poop bags. And after we had bought some, we were gonna have people donating their plastic grocery bags for people to use.
There are doggy poop bags in various parks. I don't think there's in Basin Park, but it's in the other parks.
Okay, well, we were gonna do all the parks, but it was gonna start there. Are we still buying the bags or do we have a setup for people?
I think there's, I think the parks, the bags are in the parks, parks, part of parks.
Are they bought or donated?
I'm sure they're bought.
They're bought. Okay, maybe we should talk to parks and see if we can't set it up to donate them.
Yeah, you know, that's, I don't know. Anyway, well, their parks are taking their, I don't know who would donate them. They're special, would you buy the doggy bags?
No, see, that's what we were talking about, was taking those.
The special containers, the special containers are for doggy bags. Have you been by the other parks?
Well, no, my dogs, they aren't social.
Go by and look at them, and then we can talk about your donation concept.
Well, but we had, that's what we had talked about on council before was after we got the initial bags, would we be able to replace it with the donated grocery store bags?
No, you can't do that.
Okay.
Ms. Green?
I agree with Mr. Mitchell. How would we go about starting this? I think that's a great idea. It could maybe help with our revenue. We can maybe designate it towards something, but I, I think it's a great idea.
I'm not sure about helping our revenue, but I mean, we can certainly, you know, if y'all are interested, and I'm totally supportive of something like that, so it's a matter of doing it. Mr. McClung?
Well, I think, one, it would be nice if, if recycle would pick them up. That would be a help because I know they do get recycled somewhere somehow.
Walmart's the only place.
Okay, they've got a collection for them, but they recycle them.
I'm not sure what Walmart does. Recycling doesn't, can't recycle those plastic bags.
Our recycling can, but they go somewhere.
They recycle any place in Arkansas that can recycle them. They recycle.
Well, then, you know, then the right thing to do is eliminate them.
Yeah, well, that's what.
Well, is that what you're, you're saying? So, you're just talking about maybe putting a, you know, a price tag on them?
That is an option either.
Oh, I would, my, my thought, if you're gonna do this, would be to eliminate it.
Well, now that, I mean, that's more like it.
I mean, we can't, recycling facilities that we have and where we take our recycling cannot recycle plastic bags. And I don't think there's one, Little Rock has the most progressive recycling facility, and even there, are cutting back on their plastics. Most of the recycling was sent over to Japan, and now Japan has created some, there's some issues going on and they're not taking a lot of our plastic anymore. So, if we, and I'm totally supportive of it. I think what the next step is for us to make a motion to create an ordinance or to look into creating an ordinance. Ms. Snyder?
Food for thought. What kind of town do we live in? A tourist town. Where do the tourists go? All these shops up and down these streets. What do they buy? All these neat little trinkets and T-shirts and stuff. What do they go in? You can't sit there and make a decision like that without involving the shopkeepers. You're talking about an awful lot of money. It's one thing if it's like Hart's Grocery Store. They already started ages ago. Every hundred dollars, you get a free bag and all that. You don't need to use plastic. That's one thing there. You can't do that to these shopkeepers.
Ms. Green?
They can use paper, Mickey.
Oh, let's kill trees.
Now, let's one at a time, please.
We can kill trees or we can screw our environment.
Mickey?
No, this is silly.
Mickey, one, please. Mr. Mitchell?
I make a motion that we explore, that we draft an ordinance regarding the use of plastic bags within the city limits of Eureka Springs and their elimination.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Yes, sir.
I don't want to get into the same trap that Parks has gotten into, which is not going through the process correctly. You know, to just write an ordinance without a public meeting, public input, that concerns me.
Well, ordinance, whether we do the ordinances, you know, once it's written, people will be aware of it, and then we'll read it the first time, and it's actually can be read three times, so it takes six weeks for it to be heard. Yes, sir.
So, we have a guarantee that it would be six weeks and not be read two or three times in the same time?
Except, the only guarantee is what the council wants to guarantee.
Well, then I, I'm not comfortable with that.
What's your solution?
To go ahead and just set up a public meeting to discuss the issue.
Well, we have another motion on the floor at this point, so. Mickey?
I'm gonna reiterate. You cannot do this to the shop owners and the keepers of the businesses in town without having a major workshop, a town hall meeting, whatever you want to call it. These are the things that keep this town going, that make it possible for people to eat, sleep, have a roof over their head. You cannot say, "Too bad, you don't get to use plastic anymore." You can't do that. So, if you want to have a major town hall, fine. If you just want to hope that word gets around, the proper word, not the exaggerations and everything else that we've had happen with the Parks thing, then you will call a town hall meeting for the strict discussion of all of these businesses.
Ms. Green?
I, when I second that, I knew this ordinance wouldn't be something written real quickly and done in six weeks. I think this is something that's gonna take a little time writing it, maybe refining it, maybe listening to something of Mickey's, you know. I don't anticipate it being written and passed in six weeks.
Shouldn't even be started until the meeting.
Mr. Mitchell?
The process that we use in, if we follow it, don't rush it. Mr. McClung brought up a very good point. We stopped an ordinance tonight. It was at its third reading because we got, we got input from somebody that made us question that we should just hold it. The process that we have is, is to draft an ordinance and then start the process. And there's nothing wrong with it. And I'm sure that the papers are very clearly going to cover this process. And I'm sure that when we started discussing Parks, everybody managed to get down here and tell us what they thought about Parks and all. So, I have a strange feeling that the public has great opportunity to get down here and tell us about plastic bags. So, I have no problem with going ahead and drafting an ordinance because I don't think it's out of line at all for us to ask to have something in writing that has some substance to it so that people will know what we're looking at in the first place. Because there's no guarantee we'd even pass it on the first draft in the first place. The public is going to have plenty of opportunity to have input into this issue. And I'm not gonna belabor the points of why it's good because I already basically have done that, and I think it does match Eureka Springs.
Ms. McClung?
Yeah, I, I agree. I'd like to have something in our hands so we have something that we can tweak and get input on. And if we need to, once we get it, and then if we need to have a, a public hearing on it, then we can do it. You know, I think that's, that's a fine idea.
Mr. Thomas?
I'd just like to say that I resist the implication, and it comes up again and again and again, that if you're concerned about the process, you're not concerned about what's good for Eureka Springs. I would, personally, I would outlaw plastic bags tonight, but there's a process. It doesn't mean I'm, I want plastic bags to say that I want to do this correctly. And so, I'll ask the attorney if there's a, there's a motion to write an ordinance and that be amended to say that that ordinance will not be passed, will not be read more than once in one meeting at each meeting?
That would have to be a separate action the council would take, not, not part of the same action.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
I started on the city level 14 years ago, representing every shopkeeper in town when it came to losing our second best Sunday parking lot to non-tourism stuff. I have.
I have been representing the shopkeepers ever since then. The very first step on something at this level is to have a town hall workshop with the shopkeepers. Depending on their reaction then depends if you go ahead and take steps. It is not one grocery store. It is a town of businesses. And what you're saying is, you're going to have to come up with all kinds of big, expensive bags for the tourists, because they don't know they have to bring their own. Although in this day and age, luckily, quite a few of them, like me, do carry them. You want to sit there and do something about plastic bags, go online, look up Plarn, P-L-A-R-N, plastic yarn. It shows you exactly how to take your plastic bags, cut them, and crochet or knit them into the most fabulous purses and rugs. Have done it, they last forever. But take first steps first. Get a meeting with the shopkeepers before you try to screw them over.
Any further questions or comments? All right, Madam Clerk, would you want to reread the motion, please?
A motion to draft an ordinance regarding the use of plastic bags in Eureka Springs and their elimination.
All right, all those in favor, sing five, saying aye.
Right.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What happened to opposed?
All those opposed?
No, definitely no.
Is that 4-1? Did you vote aye?
I mean, you voted, that's why I said you voted aye. Yes.
Okay, 4-1.
But I think you wanted to...
Okay, yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that this proposed ordinance was once drafted, not be read more than once at any meeting.
I'll second that point.
Any discussion? All right, hearing done, the motion is that this ordinance after, will only be read at...
Once per meeting.
Once per meeting. Thank you. All those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Right.
Any opposed?
Since I am totally against it, I abstain.
Vote, okay.
4-0-1.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, that brings us to your quarter financial report.
Yeah, I want to mention that the reason this goes on the agenda, it's required by state law that this happens, and just to say, I don't just pull things out of the hat, there's always a reason for it. There are five components. We have the receipts, the check register, and the payroll, and the long-term liabilities and the bank balances are attached to the monthly report that you saw earlier today. And that's it.
All right, any questions? All right, that brings us up to item six, a report on the community center.
Motion to hear?
Could it be second?
Second.
All right. I really have nothing to report on the community center.
You didn't talk to them?
I have, I have not received any response back from them.
Did you talk to them person to person? Did you call them at the meeting? What?
Yes, I did talk to them, and I haven't received anything back.
Okay, so you talked to them, you explained what the situation was, what was their response?
They're going to get back to me.
And they didn't say when?
No, I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay, how long ago did you talk to them? Two weeks, a day, what?
Mickey, I don't remember. Yeah, that's two weeks.
All right, could you talk to them again?
I will.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
When we made the motion and we started it, you would think that most organizations would realize that it was a request and they would respond back. This continued, I think, from a councilman here, that the mayor has to go out and hold the hands of a commission to ask them for feedback, and it's rather juvenile and ludicrous. I would think that the community center would have responded back to the mayor in a more adult manner, and that's my comment.
All right, any further questions? Mickey?
The reason they're acting like a child is because y'all acted like a child. To get back at one person, you cut your nose off, so that'd be them mad, and so they cut their nose off. Therefore, we are at a standstill, and that's ridiculous. If we can get a one-on-one discussion, or have them come and have a workshop, so we can try to meet together and come up with something, that would be fine. As it is right now, both parties are acting like children. That's the problem.
Yes, sir.
I just was looking at different centers of recreation facilities and all, and I noticed that the Jones Center in Springdale, on their website, down the left-hand column, it has about us, history, blah, 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 and then it has financial disclosure, and you click on it, and it says, "Call this number." I haven't called them, because I wasn't interested in the Jones Center, but obviously, they provide financial information when people come in.
Any further comments? All right, that brings us up to our last one, which was, and I can't read my own writing now.
Memorial Day.
Oh, Memorial, changing meetings for the, next Monday, Memorial. Get a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
May 28th is Memorial Day, so what day are we going to meet instead of?
We've met before on Memorial Day.
No, we haven't. They tried.
Okay.
Is, is City Hall closed that day?
City Hall is closed.
Okay.
That doesn't prevent us from meeting.
Why would be?
Thank you, pardon?
I guess we have to have two meetings a month.
Not necessarily. You know, it's, it's good. We always have a lot of issues going on.
Let's move it to the 21st. Do we have any other commission meetings, then?
May I say something about that?
Hello?
Yes.
It's very difficult to turn it around in that time span, to complete the minutes, to prepare the agenda, to get it published. If it were another day of the same week, it could work without creating absolute chaos.
How about the 30th?
Planning would be Tuesday, wouldn't it? Is anybody due Wednesday?
I think the 30th would be for us, the CAPC.
CAPC's here at 6:00.
Okay.
However, what about, what about a daytime meeting?
Do we have anybody meeting on Thursday?
We don't necessarily have it at 6:00.
On which day?
Tuesday or Wednesday, I don't care.
Uh, 29th, 30th, I'm going to be gone the 30th on to that week.
29th, fine with me. I know you got, you got, you got meetings in the morning with...
I got a meeting in the morning.
Right.
Afternoon.
But afternoon, I mean, Memorial Day itself is a family day, so I hate to break into that, you know. I don't want to, you know, make people that would make, want to attend the meeting have to interrupt those plans. That's, I don't think that's a good choice.
Did we say there's a Tuesday, is it planning on Tuesday?
Yes.
Right, if it were in the afternoon on the 29th, it would cover your bases and...
It would precede, what, planning is Tuesday evening, right?
6:00.
We just got to precede that.
So at 3:00?
Can we skip the budget meeting, then?
Yeah.
It's a special occasion.
Yeah, sure, why not? I don't think that's a problem.
Meet at 3:00?
Sure.
3:00 to 5:00?
29th.
Yep.
Well, we could go to 6:00, but yeah, okay.
So what time do you pick, 3:00?
3:00?
29th, why not?
Here?
I make a motion that we, that we change the meeting from May 28th to May 29th at 3:00 p.m.
22nd.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would amend the motion to cancel the budget workshop that day.
Yes.
Second that for you?
All right. Okay, any further discussion? I vote on the amendment to cancel the budget workshop. All those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the motion is to move the meeting from May 28th to May 29th at 3:00 in the auditorium. All those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right, agenda setting. Yes, sir.
I'd like to add a discussion of the remodeling of the auditorium.
Second.
Okay. Any other thing?
Do we need to make a motion? We, there was a request to not do anything with North Street until we made a final decision. Does that have to be, should that be a motion? Or can we just leave it as not doing anything?
I'm just leaving it as it is, yeah.
Okay.
At this point. All right, council comments. Mr. Mitchell?
No, I think I'll leave my soapbox at home tonight.
2:08.
Ms. Green?
I want to kind of address something that Cameron brought up tonight, about kind of the incestiveness of the commissions, the councils, the committees, and there's, there's some truth to what he says, but there's also, and I'll give an example. About nine years ago, I was asked to be on the planning commission, because there was no quorum. Actually, I was begged, and so I said, "I'll, okay, I'm on HGC, I'll go on there, as long as I get the shortest term and I can leave." Well, by the time the term was over, still without a quorum, so I stayed, and I ended up staying. But over the years, I've had people say to me, you know, "I want you to do this, I want you to do that," and I keep saying, "Please, come, be a commissioner. Sign up, run for council." So people, Cameron's right about it. Let's get some people out there, and let's run. Let's come and sign up for our commissions. We can use some new blood. I 100% agree. I'm done.
Ms. Snyder?
I just want to wish my oldest son happy birthday. He is 45 today, although he quit counting many decades ago, but I'm proud of him for making it. Happy birthday, Tracy.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McClung? All right, we have a lot of events coming up. One of the more famous ones, I guess, or ones that are enjoyable, I guess, for a lot of people anyway, is on the 27th and 28th, we have the yards and yards and yards of yard sales. It's going to be all over town. And then 28th, that evening, Dancing in the Park, from 3:00 to 5:00. And then May 1st, it's the beginning of our May Festival of the Arts. We have a calendar that's been prepared and is on the CAPC website that also lists a lot of the events going on. Some of them are everything from chalk festivals to plein air to various other deals throughout the month. But for the next two weeks, on the 3rd, we will have a play in the auditorium called Willow Mancy Foot. It's a musical with, should be quite exciting. And there are the kids, it's a children's musical, prepared or performed by children. And the last one they did was, was quite fun, so I'm sure this was going to be good also. Then on the 4th and 5th, we have Out Back in the Ozark, that's all day out in Leatherwood Park. And on the 5th, we have our famous Art Rageous Parade, at 2:00 p.m., starting at the library down Spring Street. And then also on the 5th, we have Buskers in the Park, from 10:00 to 6:00. And then on the 11th through the 13th, we have, I'm going to mess this one up again probably, the Third Annual Newette Rosé. I understand that's a rose, rosé wine festival, at dinner hours throughout many of the fine restaurants in our town. And then on the 12th, we have the Music Park Yard Ball, from noon to 5:00, North Main Music Park. On the 12th, we'll have the Ozark Corral Spring Concert, 7:00 p.m. here in the auditorium. And then on the 13th, the next day, we'll have John Two Hawk's Annual Mother Day Concert, 2:00 p.m. at the Yard. That's it. Can you get a motion to... So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all.